Good evening. If y'all will take a seat or stand, it don't matter. But we're getting ready to get started. Last night, Commissioners Court was recessed, so I'm gonna go first and open up Commissioners Court and make sure that we've got a quorum. We'll do our pledge allegiance, and then if the school wants to make sure they have a quorum, and then we'll continue with the city, okay? It is 6:33. Calling Commissioners Court back in session. We need to determine there's a quorum present. Commissioners, y'all changed my name. We have Commissioner Wardlaw, Commissioner Flores, Commissioner Nettleton, Commissioner Vasquez, and myself, the judge. We have a quorum. If we will please rise, so we can start the pledge allegiance.
Why would you please pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, when we take our seats, if we could just have a moment of silence for D-Day, please? We'll just take a little moment of silence. Thank you. School District, if y'all want to make sure y'all have a quorum and continue.
Yes, good evening. Madam Secretary, would you call roll?
Mr. Contreras, Mrs. Wanda Web.
Present.
Mrs. Haynes Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Overfelt.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
And myself. Sir, we have a quorum.
Let the record show that we do have a quorum for this special call board meeting, and this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Detectives Given Code, Chapter 551. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. We will now conduct our quorum requirements. Ms. Lada, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Bruno Lozano.
Present.
Councilwoman Diana B. Salgado.
Here.
Councilman Roland Garza.
Present.
Councilman Raúl Ciojeda. Councilman Alfredo Carranza Jr.
Here.
Councilman James DeRouze.
Here.
Councilwoman Elizabeth Edisante de Calderón. You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, sorry. Mayor, last night, we'd had some individuals that, you know, I think a couple of y'all got to listen to, but I don't know whether, if we would start with that first, Mayor?
I believe that's a good direction to begin with, with the members that spoke last night.
If you want, we started with, we started with Mr. Garza, but if you want, let's start with Mr. Ortiz, Chief Ortiz, if you don't mind. Where'd he go? I'm sorry. Mr. Ortiz, Chief Ortiz. He was walking, he was walking this way when he sat down.
He was trying to avoid you.
Yeah, sure, it's volume on the back.
Mr. Lino, they're saying that they're, we're not audible. If you want to find the volume, please. Thank you.
Chief Ortiz, if you could just, you gave us some comments last night, sort of an idea of what we're going through and what you're facing, if you could just begin with that, please.
Yes, sure, Judge. Thank you very much. Appreciate the quorum and appreciate all the attendance here. On behalf of the men and women of the Border Patrol, CBP, DHS, and everybody that's working to manage this crisis that we're facing on the border, we really appreciate the community support. You know, Mr. Weathersby was mentioning to me that when he passes a Border Patrol agent or customs officer, he always thanks him for what they do. And you'd be surprised how much that means to our folks out there, you know, working day in tirelessly to manage this problem that sometimes feels like it's just such a daunting task for us. I will tell you that just this afternoon, I was in Eagle Pass earlier, and we had what we called a border safety initiative. And we had a border safety initiative to really underscore the dangers that are inherent with crossing the Rio Grande, with crossing in the brush, out in the ranch lands, into the farms that we patrol. And I will tell you that our men and women have done a tremendous job of rescuing people. We've seen over 400 rescues nationally, and then in this sector, our folks have just done a tremendous job of trying to save lives out there. So what are we up against? We're up against about 34,000 apprehensions so far this year. That puts us at a 217% increase compared to where we were last year. We're averaging 254 apprehensions a day, and just about three or four days ago, we had about 500 in one day. And so, this scenario is playing out across the entire 2,000 miles of the southwest border. And in fact, there are sectors in Rio Grande Valley, El Paso, that are experiencing much higher volume than we are experiencing here. I was talking to my cohorts in Rio Grande Valley today. They have 8,200 people in custody right now. We are very fortunate that we are able to do a pretty good job of processing, and we're certainly not experiencing the flow that is coming across the river and some of the other areas, or coming across the border. And out of that 34,000, what does that encompass? Most of the people, about 75 to 80% of the people we are encountering are from OTM countries. Those are countries other than Mexico. And when I talk about OTM countries, I'm talking about El Salvador, Guatemala, and Honduras primarily, but what we've seen here is a bit of an increase in folks from the continent of Africa. And I know that we've seen a couple of news stories. I have made some comments in the media talking about these individuals, and I will talk about them towards the end of my presentation. So out of that 34,000, about 20,000 of those individuals are family units or kids, or have an association with a child. The rest of them are gonna be adult males and females that are trying to get away from our officers each and every day. Those are the folks that are getting smuggled out into the Comstock area, out in the Camalo area, Del Rio, and some of these other areas, and we've done a pretty good job of apprehending them as soon as we possibly can. So, why do we have this problem set that we're experiencing right now? The federal government does not have the capacity to detain family units and kids. We are over capacity across the board. We have 51,000 people in DHS custody right now. We were only funded for 36,000 beds, so we're already over capacity. As we continue to see these increases across the entire southwest border, that really challenges us to be able to process these people as quickly as we possibly can and get them out of our custody. The Border Patrol is not in the detention business. We're in the apprehending, processing, and deportation business whenever we can. What we've seen in the past as an organization, and I've been doing this 28 years, folks, is typically Mexican individuals, adults. When we apprehend somebody from Mexico, we can process them and repatriate them within hours. If we apprehend somebody from Central America or a country other than Mexico, we have to get travel documents so they can return to their home country. We cannot send them back to Mexico, and we certainly have to make some coordination efforts with our consulates to ensure they have the proper travel documents so they can return to Guatemala, Honduras, and El Salvador. I will tell you that principally in this sector, we see mostly Honduran nationals, and then Guatemala and El Salvador, and then Mexican nationals follow suit. And so, right now, I have a little over 1,000 people in custody across this sector. We go from Carizo Springs to Comstock, Bracketville, Uvalde, Abilene, San Angelo, Rock Springs, Del Rio, two stations in Eagle Pass, and then of course, the Uvalde checkpoint. And so, what does that mean for me? If I have 1,000 people in custody, and I have the ability to hold 850 people satisfactorily, that means I'm over capacity, and I've got to release family units, because those are the lowest threat within the population group that I'm experiencing. I have not released one adult, male or female, into this community, or any of the other communities I represent. We're not releasing children. They are turned over to Health and Human Services, Office of Refugee Resettlement. The only people that we are releasing are family units. That is, a father with a child, a mother with a child, or parents with two children or such. And so, the reason we are releasing them is because we cannot hold them in our custody longer than 20 days, because there are court rulings and policies in place that prohibit us from doing that. If we could hold them in custody longer than 20 days and get them before an immigration judge or an asylum officer, we would be able to process them, hear the relief hearing, and if, make a determination on whether we can repatriate them back to their home country, or release them with some sort of immigration benefit. That is not in our capacity right now, because we are overwhelmed across the board. So how do we fix this, and what do we do about it? I've just spent the last five and a half years in Rio Grande Valley in South Texas as a deputy chief, and quite often I was the acting chief. And so I've dealt with some really high numbers. When I arrived here a couple of months ago, I told my team, I said, "Hey, listen, we're already starting to see an uptick. Let's start doing some things to prepare for this." The first thing we did is certainly reached out to our interagency partners in the county, the city, and others, and we said, "Hey, we're gonna have to start releasing people. We need to set up a system, so that way, we can, when we release them, we can get them to their final destination." When I apprehend somebody, or my team apprehends somebody, I don't apprehend too many people these days, but when they do, quite often, they say, "Hey, I'm going to Houston, I'm going to Dallas, I'm going to Maryland, Virginia, North Carolina." They don't say, "I'm going to Del Rio, or Eagle Pass, or Bracketville, or Comstock." We are just a transit point. And so, my experience over the last 28 years, and certainly over the last five and a half years in South Texas, is, it's in the best interest of our communities to move these people along, okay? Do we have to have some immigration fixes, some policy fixes? Yes. That's, everybody knows that. Media knows that, Congress knows that, the administration knows that, and the public knows that. But in the interim, we are gonna be forced to manage this for a while. I do not expect the traffic to go the other direction. I do not expect it to drop. I continue, I expect it to either stay steady as to where we're at, or increase over the next couple of months, and then typically, we see a downward turn in the fall. But until that happens, the last thing I want to do is create a situation or environment where this community feels like, "Hey, you're putting us at risk." Whether it's a health risk, whether it's a security risk, or whether it's just, "Hey, I just don't feel comfortable." And so, what we have proposed and asked is that we will do everything in our authority and our power to coordinate with the city, the county, and this plays out in Eagle Pass, plays out here, is playing out in Uvalde also. We want to do everything we can to make sure that the impact to the community is minimized as much as we possibly can. And so, just in the last probably couple of weeks, we've seen an uptick in African nationals. And these are folks from the Congo, Angola, you know, the Republic of Congolese, and today we actually had a couple of individuals in Camalo that were from Togo, which I had to look up, because I wasn't real familiar, you know, it's a West African country. And so, why are they coming here? Because they were frustrated. They went to Laredo, the cartel said, "No, you're not crossing here." So they said, "Well, there's Cubans already staged in Acuña, get us, let's go over there." And so they've been there for a little while. We've, and we've known that they were there, we just didn't know when they were crossing. And we knew fortunately, because of the high water, that they weren't gonna be able to cross if they waited across the Rio Grande. Once the river dropped, all bets were off, and they started coming across the Weir Dam, and then they started coming across some other locations. Quite often, I hear people tell me, "Hey, just stop them in the river. That's not safe for them, and that's not safe for my officers." The last thing I want is a loss of life from anyone. And so, we're gonna continue to do everything we can to apprehend as many of these people as we possibly can. That's my job. We're gonna do everything we can to process them as quickly as we can, because I don't want to keep them in my custody. I'm not equipped. I don't have beds, I don't have shower facilities, I don't have, you know, full-time cleaning contracts in all my facilities. And so, I have, I am making adjustments, I'm spending money. I've set up three tents in Eagle Pass to help with the overflow, but even that, as soon as I open them up next week or the week after, they're gonna be full. And so, there's, this is where the community comes into play. Y'all have to make a decision, okay? Do we do a little bit and help this process along? Do we do nothing, okay, and think that, you know, the federal government's gonna come right away and be our salvation and fix this? Or do we just turn a blind eye and hope that it goes away? Because hope is not a very good strategy, in my estimation. And so, I would offer up that, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to help coordinate with the county, the city, all the bodies that are represented here, but more importantly, I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure that this community stays safe. That's my goal, is to make sure this community stays safe, to secure the border, and then to get as many resources as I can while we have this crisis. And when I talk about resources, what I'm talking about is I'm asking for more Border Patrol agents, I'm swearing in new agents every week. I'm gonna, we're gonna ask for more, where's Leiana? We're gonna ask for more customs officers, and we're gonna get more customs offices for a port of entry, and for our Amistad POE as much as we possibly can. We're gonna get more technology, more boats, more horses, more canines, you name it, I'm asking for it. And so, I would not be a good steward of this community if I didn't take advantage of a crisis. And so that's what I'm trying to do. I will tell you, right now, I have 175 officers as well, and those are customs officers, those are air marshals, and others that are helping us out. And I mentioned this last night. These folks are staying in our hotels, eating at our restaurants, spending money at our stores, and they will be here as long as we need them. And so, this, it's not all gloom. There are some positive things that we are working towards, and we're doing everything we can within the local level, as well as the national level, to try and minimize the impact to the community. I will be willing to take any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chief Ortiz. Counsel, do you have any comments or concerns, counsel? Questions?
Chief Ortiz, just a question. Can you go over just the airplanes that are coming in? Why are they getting here? Just the process, why, why does that happen?
So, nationally, the numbers for May just came out yesterday afternoon. In May, we apprehended 132,000 people, the Border Patrol nationally. As I described, in South Texas, they have 8,200 people in custody, they're only equipped to hold about 4,000. So they're way over their capacity, and that plays out across the entire southwest border. We, when we started receiving the planes, were under that 865 mark that I mentioned, and we're certainly in a position to help out. I remember, this says US Border Patrol, not Del Rio Border Patrol, even though I represent this sector. So from a national perspective, we have to do everything we can to help out our other sectors whenever we can. So we have made arrangements to bring in a couple of flights with family units only. We're not processing adults, we're not, criminal aliens, all those will stay in custody. These are family units, because we have really done a pretty good job of processing people relatively quickly. We were actually supposed to receive a plane a couple of days ago. Mother Nature helped out. It rained, we weren't able to bring a plane in, and that helped us out, because the day before that, we had 500 people that we had apprehended. So, they're doing this here, as well as in San Diego, and this is really just moving that population around to some other areas that can afford to process them, because they have ample space and people.
So the question has been, why aren't we sending them to Dallas, or somewhere else?
We have no Border Patrol agents in Dallas, or somewhere else, to process them. And by mandate, you know, we have deployed Border Patrol agents from the northern border, from the coastal sectors, into the southern border. So I'm using overtime, my agents are stretched awfully, awfully thin right now. I'm worried about battle fatigue across the entire country, not just here, but across the country, because you know, when you're dealing with an operational tempo like this for so long, eventually you get tired. But fortunately, we've got great morale, we've got great men and women participating in this effort, and we'll be okay. We're not gonna panic.
Mayor, real quick, if council members want to go first, and then maybe the school that we, we're just not all asking questions, we'll go last.
Sure. Chief Ortiz, I would like to just clarify, we did have a meeting, and I believe the judge as well did have a separate meeting with your group. If you just want to elaborate on the health screening aspect of what happens in the processing center, and can you explain that to the public, please?
Yeah, so great question. So, one of the things that I did when I arrived in South Texas in 2013, is we saw the same increases that we're seeing here. And so we set up what we call a centralized processing center. This allowed us to bring in professionals, health professionals, medical screeners, we brought in people just to help us launder their clothes, on and on and on. We call these wraparound services. And so, when I arrived here a couple of months ago, I asked the team, "What are we doing?" Because I didn't want to do things nine different ways, and nine different of my, nine different stations that I represent. And so I said, "You know what? We're gonna centralize our efforts in a couple of locations." Our two stations that are best equipped to do this is in Eagle Pass, is the station that's close to the Kickapoo Casino down there, and then also Comstock, and to some degree, Del Rio, actually, it's three stations. And so what we are working towards is having medical services at these locations, we're buying, you know, high-dollar freezers so we can store food, we're doing everything we can so we can manage this internally as much as we can. On the medical contract, right now, I have EMTs, Border Patrol agents that are trained EMTs, and others that are providing the evaluation, medical evaluation, to sure, to ensure we don't release anybody with a contagious disease or communicable disease. And so, we've been pretty good about catching those. And when we're not 100% sure, we transport them to a hospital, and we have them checked out by a facility wherever they may be at, Uvalde, Eagle Pass, or Del Rio. At the end of June, I will have full-time professionals, contractors, that are working as part of our team, at least in Eagle Pass. I actually had a conversation today with Washington DC to try and get some pediatricians up in Uvalde, and we're working towards trying to expand that as much as we possibly can. So I'm pretty confident that we're doing a pretty good job of making sure that we're not releasing anybody with anything that could be infectious to the community.
Thank you, Chief Ortiz. School Board, we'll open up the questions to your.
I just want to ask Mr. Ortiz, thank you again for everything you do.
Thank you.
And welcome back to Del Rio, and I know your family will. We have very limited resources in Del Rio, and, you know, here in San Antonio has lots of resources that we're not accustomed to. And, you know, this is the summer, we just ended the school year, we have very limited staff on hand. What are the biggest needs that you're pretty much asking for?
So, me particularly, I'm not asking for anything, you know, other than a thank you and, hey, good job. Not for me, for our officers. No, what I'm talking about is, you know, there's got, if nobody helps these individuals once we release them, my requirement is to process them, and typically, you could walk them right out the door, and then they're free to go wherever they need to go. Some of them do not have the means, or the process, or understand the culture, and don't have the means to call somebody, because they're going somewhere. I'll give you an example, a family that crosses from Central America, they're probably going to Maryland or Virginia. They have family members already there, but they need to know, "How do I get a bus ticket to get me from here to San Antonio, from San Antonio ultimately to Virginia," or wherever they're planning on going. And so, this process is set up in El Paso, it's set up in Rio Grande Valley, San Diego, and this plays out in all these border communities. Here, we don't really have that process. We've started it, Patrick Shaw's here, and some others, they're doing a great job. I mean, they scrambled around over the last probably 60 days or so, and they've done a tremendous job with the support of some of the bodies here. But, this ain't going away for the next 18 months, is what I gather, until the next election cycle. I think we're gonna be dealing with a semblance of this. It may drop a little bit, or it may rise a little bit, but we're gonna be dealing with this. And so, what I am proposing is that I just don't walk them out the back door of a Border Patrol station and let them into the community without somebody receiving them and shepherding them through the process, so they can get onto their final destination. The key to this is in and out of this community as quickly as we possibly can get them. That's the key.
All good?
I just have one question. In terms of the medical screenings, in terms of criminal record, how are we verifying these individuals who are being released, the family units?
So most of the people we encounter are, this is their first time coming into this country, but that's not always the case. You will see quite often a press release that we will put out, that will talk about somebody who had an extensive criminal history, or had a warrant, or whatnot. So what we do is we run them through our databases, we run them through Interpol's databases, and then we are also doing some checks on people that we suspect may either be perpetrating some sort of fraud, an adult traveling with somebody who's probably not their kid, or we do some additional checks against databases that are in El Salvador, Guatemala, and Honduras. I'm not, I'm not here to tell you that everybody I release, I know 100% sure that they haven't done a crime. But, what I'm saying is, we've run them against every database that we have access to, and we're pretty comfortable that they're not wanted for murder in Austin, Texas, or Dallas, Texas.
So previous to this uptick, if you will, the mass surge that has occurred, y'all had been releasing family units before, like prior to this sort of movement?
In other locations, yes. Here, we weren't, because we weren't experience, experiencing the volume. This comes down to a capacity issue. We do not have the capacity, and it's not safe to hold people longer than we're holding them in the conditions that we're holding them. We need to get them out, and because the family unit population poses the least amount of risk, that's the population that's getting released.
Chief Ortiz, just for clarity, and just so that the public is aware, what exactly is a family unit in the, in the eyes of the Border Patrol sector?
Yeah, great question. So, a family unit has to be a mother and a father, or a legal guardian, and someone under the age of 18, which would be 17 and younger. We have seen a 17-year-old mother with a child that's pregnant just recently. They will stay in our custody and will ultimately go to HHS, Health and Human Services, but if it's a mother, or a father, and a child, we've never seen the level of adult males with children that we are seeing right now. Every, the word has gotten out, social media, news, radio, you name it, they all know, if they come with a child, chances are, they will be released.
Chief, as far as documentation, what kind of documentation do these people have that proves that these children that they have with them are actually their children?
Yeah, so not all of them have documents, but most of them do. Most of them have a birth certificate, or they have some sort of verification to prove that the child is with them. Sometimes that is false, and we've done a pretty good job of sifting through those that we think they may be trying to perpetrate some sort of fraud, but quite often, remember, a lot of these individuals are traveling through multiple countries to get here. And so quite often, they have a permiso already from the Mexican government, they have a visa, and then when they cross, they may get rid of some of those travel documents, but they're always gonna hang on to their birth certificate.
Thank you.
There's a, and you've answered most of these questions, but there's tons of rumors out there, and I see them all over Facebook every day, and the community panics about Ebola, and all kinds of diseases that are being spread throughout this community and all over the United States. It sounds to me like y'all are addressing this, at least to the best of your ability, and the people that you can't verify whether that child is theirs or not through, how are y'all dealing with those issues?
Yeah, we will place them, or keep them, in our custody as long as we possibly can. Our number one priority is to do whatever is in the best interest of that child. And so, if we suspect that there's fraud, we certainly are going to maintain custody of them, so we, and we're great with the consulates, I don't know if we have any consulate representatives here, but we had a meeting just yesterday with Trigamex, which represents the Central American and Mexico, and, you know, we do a tremendous, they interview almost all of these individuals after we process them. So there's multiple, you know, evaluations and discussions that happen prior to them being released. And just to touch on the, you know, Ebola, and something like that, those kinds of things, most of the folks that we have interdicted or apprehended from the African nation countries, I will tell you that they've been traveling for a while. There is, you know, an incubation period associated with Ebola. There is, you know, an incubation period associated with Ebola. We interviewed every single one of them, and we talked, and we had travel documents for quite, quite a lot of them. And so, I think we're pretty comfortable and confident that, you know, if they had had something like that, it would have surfaced prior to them even traveling into the United States. It would have surfaced when they were in Mexico, or Ecuador, Brazil, or wherever they were traveling from. And so, and quite often, most of them took planes till they got to this point. And then, they ran out of money, or they were waiting to cross the border whenever the time permitted, or they were able to, because the cartels allowed them to. And so, you know, we're doing everything we can. I'm trying to protect my officers, make sure that they're not exposed to anything. And we've got, I think, some safeguards in place to be able to ensure that, you know, we don't let anything out in the community that's going to be harmful.
You said, travel documents, so when they enter Mexico on the southern border, the Mexico government is giving them travel documents to pass through their country. What type of document is that?
Typically, it's a 30-day PMSO. No different if we were to go to Mexico and say, hey, I'm going to go spend a couple of weeks in San Miguel, or whatever. It's very similar to that, and they know that, hey, I've got 28, 29, okay, it's time to go. And so, yeah, typically, it's a 30-day PMSO.
All right, thank you. Bottom line is, they open the door. Right? They open the door for them to come through their country. That way, they can get them out of their country and send them to us.
Yeah, you know, there was a discussion earlier that talked about, you know, we've got 2,000 miles of border that we have to patrol. I think they've got 150 miles, or something like that. I will tell you that they don't have an awful lot of immigration officials. I mentioned this to you, Judge, about 400 nationally. We have, you know, 1,400 Border Patrol agents just in this sector. And, you know, 19,000 nationally across the entire, you know, 2,000 miles of border that we're patrolling, and we can't control it. We're doing a pretty good job of managing it right now, but we can't control it. And so, it is problematic. It's problematic certainly for them, and it certainly is problematic for us. And so, I will tell you, Judge, that we're going to do everything we can to manage this. We're not going to panic about it, but we're going to manage it.
One of the things that we had talked about yesterday was, y'all had put up some tents in Eagle Pass. And if that was probably, probably going to be possible here, that way, it would slow down how many people you're actually releasing. That way, that number could be manageable. That way, our, the buses, the transit system can, you know, get them out. And I think one of the things we talked about yesterday also was, y'all were going to try to see about trying to get them out earlier, and the ones we couldn't, maybe house them a little bit longer. You said that y'all had a contract maybe to buy food and stuff like that for them. That way, it wouldn't fall on us. And the whole deal is that with the transit system, when it first started, y'all weren't here yesterday, but we've gone from, from two small buses with Greyhound to two big buses. We've gone from one, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Garza, one Aguila bus to four, five now. Zambrano, Zaragoza is running also, and then there's another company, and then there's another company that brought in a 40-passenger bus and a 55-passenger bus. So, the goal would be is if we can get them out, get them out of your detention early enough, then we can put them on a bus to get them to San Antonio or Austin and get them out of town. The tents, you know, if it comes up, if you'll just keep us informed?
Yeah, we're working on that, Judge. In fact, the team's been working on a lot of that most of the day. And so, we're making headway. I should have the tents in Eagle Pass open probably within the next 15 days. And then, the next step would be, you know, finding a suitable location, whether it's Del Rio, or maybe even Uvalde for the additional tents.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
Council? School Board?
Board members, any questions? None?
The, you know, we talked yesterday. All we can tell you is thank you so much for the job you're doing. You know, you have all our support, and thank you so much.
Yeah, no, appreciate it, Judge. Appreciate the opportunity to share with you a lot of the information that we're talking about. I do intend, and I mentioned this to the judge, later on, either early July or mid-July, I plan to have a state of the border. And when I do that, I'm going to share some of this information with the entire community, and hopefully, we can host it here in a big enough venue. And we're not going to just talk about what we're dealing with, we're going to talk about where we're going. And we're going to talk about what we're doing. And we're going to share some of the information that we have, and also, give you an opportunity potentially to ask some questions. So, really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak. And I really look forward to the cooperative, you know, back and forth that we've had so far. Roland, you've been a gem, as well as, you know, the faith-based organizations here in this community. And I think, I think you really are on the path to doing the right thing. I know this is a polarizing issue, and I've dealt with this an awful lot over my career. But I think as a community, as long as we come together, we should be just fine. So, appreciate it. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ortiz.
Mayor? If you want, we can go through the list pretty much the way we had, the way we did yesterday. And if you want, we can call up Ms. Flores, and she'll come up, Port Director, if she doesn't mind coming and saying a couple of words, and if we have questions for her.
Yes, Judge, and Judge, Councilman Garza mentioned that Mr. Shaw, or Pastor Shaw, will be speaking on his behalf, as far as the coalition is concerned.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me here this afternoon, and the citizens for coming out here to listen to our concerns. I will start off with where the port of entry was prior to October of last year. The port was processing approximately 10 to 20 cases. And since October, the, that number has increased. We're now almost at about 250 cases a month, and these are asylum cases. So, since November, December, also last year, when the crisis began in San Diego, the port of entry was required to send CBP officers to assist the San Diego port of entry with the crisis that they were facing over there. Since then, we have deployed officers to different areas. We currently had, back in March, late February, I believe, we had the crisis in Eagle Pass. We deployed officers to assist there. Currently, we also have officers in the Rio Grande Valley sector. And in the middle of that, we're also facing a crisis here at the port of entry. So, overall, nationwide, there's 400, well, in the Laredo Field, there's 486 CBP officers that are assisting the Del Rio and the Rio Grande Valleys Border Patrol sector. So, our resources, and I'm talking about the number of officers, has decreased throughout the years, but our workload has also increased. And the casework increases, right? So, back in, a couple of weeks ago, we decided to close the dam due to some incidents that we had with migrants trying to cross through the Amistad Crossing. That crossing is not equipped with the number of personnel to handle both the traffic and the case processing. And with the number of officers that we had deployed at the time, the decision was made to close that crossing. We've listened, I've listened to the concerns of the community, the trade community, and trying to be able to facilitate the trade and travel. We will be opening the Amistad Dam as of Saturday. Just today, and I just wanted to stress this out to the public, the community, today, we had four lanes open. We had an incident at the dam while it's closed, the dam is closed right now. The International Boundary Water Commission is doing their yearly maintenance there. We had a group of migrants that came across. We had to shut down two lanes to be able to send officers out there to be able to control the situation there. So, it's, sometimes, I cannot commit to lanes. I know many of you want me to keep an X number of lanes open. I cannot commit to a lane, a number of lanes, because the situation changes all the time at the port of entry. At the same time, I have to find a balance between facilitating the trade and travel, as well as processing cases. In the midst of all of this, we recently dedicated a cargo lane to facilitate the cargo trucks that are crossing. We've been looking at, we were looking at two-hour wait times. Right now, with school out, the wait times have gone down. But this dedicated cargo lane is a temporary fix. It's just a temporary solution. We've got to look at five years from now, 10 years from now, where is the port of entry going to be? I highly recommend that the county, the city, participate in the Texas-Mexico Transportation Plan that is being put together right now. This is the time for us to speak up and voice what we want to bring to Del Rio. This plan includes 50 miles south and 50 miles north of the border. Sending a one-man team to this meeting is not going to do it. We need to come together, county, the city, to be able to send representation if you want to be a part of this plan. In all of this, I'm also working on trying to increase the number of staffing, the number of officers to be able to handle the amount of workload that the port of entry is currently facing right now. Any questions?
Council, do you have any questions or concerns for Port Director Flores?
Mr. Flores, thank you so much for the information. How are the type of individual, or not necessarily the type, but the status of the individual trying to cross at the port different from, say, the apprehensions that Border Patrol is making?
So, we are seeing family units, mother, father, just like Chief Ortiz explained, the same dynamics for family units. We are seeing single adults, a lot of, high number of Cubans. We've also seen an increase in Africans coming to the port of entry.
But there, do they get a different immigration status, or is it?
So, the port of entry by law is the location to where they can request asylum. So, everybody that's coming to us is trying to make a legitimate claim for credible fear. We've expressed as far as, you know, crossing through the port of entry, there's additional charges that are placed on them, the case may not get accepted. So, that, that is very clear to many of them. There's a lot of them that are waiting, that have been waiting two to three months in Acuña.
So, the case being, these are not just family units. It's going to be, could be a single male, a single female?
Correct, yeah. And also, just like Border Patrol does, we run checks on them. Anybody that has a criminal history will be detained and not going to be released. And I just want to make this clear, the port of entry does not release, we do not release individuals from the POE. We turn everybody to ICE, to ERO. Very rare circumstances will the port release from the POE.
Port Director Flores, I know that in conversation with Presidente Municipal de los Santos, that he was trying to establish the checkpoint to help facilitate the asylum seekers heading towards Amistad Port of Entry. Is that, has that been established? Is that, is that also considered as far as the reopening process?
That is correct. And so, that was one of the decisions why we, that played in the decision to open up the Amistad Crossing prior to 30 days. They will be setting up a checkpoint, I believe, there next to the Aduanas. Travelers will be expected to show their documents twice. We just want to make sure that everybody that is gaining access to the dam, or trying to cross the dam, is actually trying to cross into Del Rio with documents.
So, I would encourage the public entities, the government entities, to release the public information. We'll direct the city manager to do that, to inform the public that they must carry their documents and be ready to show that prior to the port of entry of the Amistad Reservoir. That way, they're, that way, everybody's informed and on the same page for that checkpoint.
Yes, thank you.
To help facilitate that. County? School Board?
You got me turned on now? So, first of all, thank you, I mean, for listening. You and I have had some decent conversations over traffic flow at the, at the bridge. And putting that commercial lane in, that was phenomenal, right? That sped that process up a bunch. Thank you for the dam reopening, that's, that's going to be enhancement. So, if you could, this is more of a question than anything else. The, when, through your process of releasing, you're not, for everybody's benefit, you're not, you're not turning the asylum seekers into the Border Patrol processing. You said you was turning it over to ICE. And then, what happens to that, that process from there, and is that at capacity?
So, the port of entry, we only process cases, and we call up, we call them up through the Mexican Immigration. They've got a list, and basically, we call them, they send the next person in line, we'll process them. We cannot move them out of the port of entry until ICE ERO has, has space for them. That's when we will start processing. If they're at capacity, we're at capacity, and we can't move them out.
Okay, so, from, from your standpoint, you don't really necessarily have a capacity issue of flowing people through that process?
No.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you again for sharing your information. I think it's very important that we have all the information that we have, that we can, to make decisions. Thank you.
Ms. Flores, real quick, when we were visiting yesterday, I mean, you mentioned that almost 20% of your officers were stationed somewhere else, right? I mean, it was a big group that was moved.
Correct.
And then, we also talked about the overtime, and then, part of that was there's a cap on how many hours they can work overtime, and some of them were already getting there.
So, the officers are allowed to work a certain number of dollars throughout the fiscal year. They're also allowed a certain number of hours that they can work throughout a 24-hour period. They can only work up to 16 hours. And our officers are working, they're tired, they're working, you know, two, three days, four days, going 16-hour shifts every day. So, we're doing everything possible to be able to facilitate the traffic. There's programs that we discussed about the reimbursable programs where the city can participate in paying for extra number of hours. But with the pool of officers that I have, it's almost impossible. They're already at capacity, they're working as much as they can already. So, just adding to that is really not, it's not feasible.
And one of the other conversations that we had also was that you actually are, from the individuals there in Acuña, getting a lot of help. Like you said, you're calling people up, that way, you don't have to run on the bridge. And then, also, you said that they were going to help you when we opened the dam. Help us down on that end also, right?
So, I, we talked to the port of entry, my managers, myself, we talked to Mexican Immigration on a daily basis to get account, to get the numbers that they have over there. And so, it, the communication is there. A lot of times, I've been told, you know, to stop processing at the port of entry. I cannot do that. The moment that I stop processing at the port of entry, they're going to run the POE, and then, we're going to have to shut down both, both locations. And I know that we don't want that to happen. I just want to make one last comment on some of the, what contributed to the increase in the, the school traffic in the morning several months ago. When I first got here, the number of passengers and pedestrians that were, that were coming in in the morning were not being captured. Officers were verifying the documents, but that information was not being inputted into the system. A large number, I want to say about 75% of these students, were coming in without a passport. So, by, to manually input that information to the system was time-consuming. Why was I doing that? Why were we inputting that information into the system? If I want additional resources here in Del Rio, I have to be able to justify it with data. And if those numbers are not in the system, I'm never going to be able to justify why it is that I need additional officers here. I contacted Department of State, they came out here to Acuña. They did a passport fair where we got almost 200 students that applied for their passport. Hopefully, in the fall, that will facilitate the number of students coming in, and we can get them out faster.
And to that, it was 300, 400?
There's approximately 350 to 400 students that cross every morning. There's about 35 bands that cross in the mornings.
And that, that traffic was not, was not being documented? So, I mean, this will help us, help us in the future.
In the long run, yes.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Thank you for your work. I know you've got your hands full over there. And I hope that in Washington, they
And I hope that in Washington, they will see the need for additional people to put at our port, so that we can, so that you can fix this problem ultimately.
Thank you. And it's a process where we're...
You were real careful there.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Do we have any other questions?
We have none.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for having me.
There's one question from the School Board.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a question about the students crossing the border. Do you see the majority of them crossing on a Monday morning, or is this on a regular basis?
This is on a regular basis. The majority are, well, Mondays is busy. It's, Mondays are always busy, right? For everybody. But on a weekly, a daily basis, they come in every morning, 35 vans full of students. The majority will, are going to private schools here.
Right. Well, we understand the majority going to private schools and charter schools just because of processes that we've set in place. But still, we're wondering, is there a process by which our public information officer can request information on the school-aged children that are crossing on a daily basis?
You can submit a FOIA request, and that information will be filtered down to, eventually down to the port of entry. We run the stats.
And is that process, does it take approximately five days, 30 days?
It just varies on the number of, the data that you're requesting.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Port Director Flores.
Mayor, if you want, we can call up the sheriff, maybe give us an update, and then, if you don't mind, Sheriff, are you here?
Sheriff Martinez.
Yes.
Yeah. Last night, he said that I hadn't given, I didn't warn him, but we did.
School Board, City Council. I just wanted to attest to the fact that our federal partners, Chief Ortiz and the Port Director Flores, what they're going through is, they're seeing that on a daily basis. And they're bending over backwards in keeping our community safe. I can attest to that. I've seen it. I've been in meetings, I've been with them, I've been to their, to their detention facilities, to the processing facilities, and they're doing a great job in keeping our community Initially, they were releasing small numbers, then all of a sudden, you know, we started getting those big numbers. But their resources are stretched thin. I can, you know, I can tell you that. But they continue day in and day out to do an excellent job in keeping our community safe. That is, that is my pri, that is my priority in our county, in our city, is to make sure that all our citizens feel safe. And it's because of them. We support their efforts through, through stone-guarding funds and overtime and working in certain areas that can't be covered. So, that's what our deputies, that's where the support is. But, you know, I take my hat off to them because they've done everything in their power, as Chief Ortiz has stated. You know, his main goal is to keep our community safe. And the faster that we get these people transitioned through and out of our county, our community will remain safe. And that's all our primary goals. I'll be glad to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Sheriff Martinez? We'll pass it on to the School Board.
School Board, anyone?
Commissioners?
I just want to say, y'all know the work going on, and you've been quite often on this, and y'all do a lot of work with the Border Patrol, so I want to thank all the deputies for doing their job.
The only thing that I would like to add, there was a comment made earlier, that people are scared in our community. If you depend on Facebook as your main source of information, you know, a lot of that stuff that's on there is wrong.
Right.
You know, feel free to call, I'm going to put you out front, Chief, you know, call Chief Ortiz, Flores, or call myself. And everybody should have my number. It's 830-719-1227. You know, I think that it's very important in our community that the correct information gets out, and that it is from a reliable source.
If I may, Judge, I just want to commend you also, Sheriff Martinez. I personally took a tour of the county and saw some of the portions of the county that you do cover, and the places where the Border Patrol is unable to. And it is very eye-opening to see how much terrain actually exists in our county until you go off Highway 90 and you go and explore and see the ranches that are out there, and you just hear the response times, and you hear, and you, it really comes full circle how much work and effort our Border Patrol is doing, our county is doing, and even the city police department is doing in establishing the networks needed to ensure that our community is safe. And I want to commend you, I want to commend again the Border Patrol, CBP, and I especially want to advocate again, as he just mentioned, call us, talk to us, we're here to answer your questions specifically pertaining to immigration crisis. As the sheriff just mentioned, Facebook posts are just that. They're not, they're not public release information from the city government, county government, school board, or what have you. And there's a lot of misinformation out there, and that's what this meeting is for, to extract that data from the men and women that are out there participating in that. And again, Sheriff Martinez, I thank you for that, for that day that we participated together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, that number was 719-1227. Counselman Garza, did you have, was Sean here?
Yeah, Sean's going to, Sean's going to present, behalf of the Coalition.
Thank you guys for having us this evening. My name's Sean Young. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Valverde, Board of Humanitarian Coalition, and I'm here to report on the ongoings that we've been seeing at the Coalition, located at 1401 Las Bacas. Over the last, we've been open for just a little bit, over a month at that location, and during that time, we have seen over 2,700 people come through that location. And also, through that, we have seen over 900 people stay the, stay the night at that location or overflow into the Joe Ramos Center. Basically, when Border Patrol calls us, they ask us to receive a certain number of family units, and when they come in, we're able to put them in communication with their families. We're able to allow them to communicate and also allow them to find some different transportation options that'll get them out of town quickly as possible, like many of you guys have stated. We have many different other services there, as well as we have Salvation Army on-site, serving over all the meals each day, three meals a day. We have a shower trailer provided by Texas Baptist that allow the people to take a shower, that someone might not have taken a shower for several days. We've, it's been a daunting task, it's been, been quite a, quite a learning process. It's, it came quickly. We just believed that we wanted to serve our community by offering a safe place, and we also wanted to give these people a safe place to, to make these connections, to go off into their, where they're going, like Chief Ortiz stated earlier, whether it be Maryland or Virginia, or wherever it may be. So, that is our primary focus, is to help them come in and get them out as quickly as possible. We've provided, we have a different, many different private van systems. We work with Greyhound. We've sent several people on planes each day. We've had, the only service we haven't worked with very closely is Amtrak because of the time of the day. At first, we were dealing with the small buses, like they mentioned earlier, but now, Greyhound has pushed it up to two bigger buses rather than the two small buses. That's helped out a lot. So, each day is a new challenge. It's a, it's a learning curve. Once we've gotten one thing figured out, something new might come our way. Like this last week, the African community started coming across, and that presented a different challenge. But we are working through that as well, so.
One of the, Mayor, one of the things that we learned today also was, last night, the canteen, basically the food truck, was going to be leaving, but it's going to be leaving, and they're bringing us another one, right?
So, Salvation Army's committed, through the course of the next week and a half, they were going to send another unit to provide services for an additional four weeks.
So, that's going to be a help. I mean, it isn't like they're going to be relying on us on anything, just like they haven't. I mean...
That was a big relief when that, when that truck pulled in. We were, we were doing the feeding for all three meals during the day. It's a great service that they have provided us with. It'll be sad to see them leave because it'll add one more thing onto our plate that, that we'll have to come up with. We have, all of our people are volunteers there. We've had several, several thousand volunteer hours over this last month. We have mission teams coming in from all parts of the state to, to join in our efforts. They, they are staying at the local hotels, or they're staying at the different churches here in town, and also, you know, out shopping and helping us with the supplies that we're, that we're missing.
Yeah. And, you know, we can't thank you enough. I mean, it's one of those deals, you know, the first group that got dropped off, you know, the 60, 70 group that got dropped, whatever that number was at Stripes, that was pretty scary on Saturday, and then on Sunday, the next, the next day, and then, you know, y'all just really stepped up. My opinion is the City Council really stepped up also. We didn't want them in our community. Again, it's, it's one of those deals, it's the cards we've been dealt, we just have to play them. But I really do want to thank you. Thank you, you know, there's not enough words. I mean, y'all have done an excellent job.
We have, I would just like to give this opportunity to thank all the volunteers that come up just tirelessly each day and spend the time there. And I know all the, the local congregations of different faith-based congregations in town, and just regular citizens that come in on a daily basis to give a hand is, is a tremendous support to us. We really believe, you know, as a pastor, you know, my always focus is love God and love people and serve the world. Well, the world is coming to us, so.
In droves, yeah.
It's here, but I also, you know, I also don't want to serve the world if I can't serve my own city of Del Rio. So, that's what I really, we as pastors really believe, that we want to fill this void that Border Patrol came to us and asked us if we could fill in the gap of what is happening.
Well, thank you so much. I guess our ultimate, I mean, you can't speak for everybody, but, you know, if we could get them out sooner, maybe with all the transportation and everything that's coming together with the buses and the vans and extra buses and everything, if we can sort of, I guess the word that everybody is using is transition, if we could get them transitioned. And, you know, my opinion is, when we were, first started talking, the focus was to get them to their end destination, you know, and my opinion again would only be to get them out of town.
We have.
You know, and I know y'all are trying to do the best you can with both, but, but I think if we can get them somewhere else, our voices are not going to be heard down here. But if we can get enough noise and make enough noise to drop them off in San Antonio and Austin to where they start complaining, maybe we can get somebody's ear. But again, I'm deviating from it. Thank you so much. Mayor?
Counsel, before I comment, do you have any questions or concerns?
Sean, of the 2,700 that have been transitioned at the center, how many have stayed behind altogether that you're able to track? And what's the longest they stay?
I would say the longest they've stayed is, we might have had a few that might have stayed longer than the one day. Like I said, we have around 900 that have stayed one night roughly during that time stretch. I know it's been really fast. I mean, we've had several, when Border Patrol is called, I've had transportation sitting there and waiting, and in some cases, they've only spent 15 minutes at the center. Just a long enough time for us to give them a bag that would just help them with their, a bag full of hygiene items, a bag full of snacks or whatnot to continue on their, on their way.
And then, I know that the Methodist Healthcare Ministries is also helping with Coalition to pursue grants.
Yes.
In excess of $100,000 on one part, to as much as matching every local dollar to the tune of two to one on funding.
And we are receiving other phone calls as well, outside of that, from other organizations that are looking into providing support for this issue down here. They see the need, and they want to come join us and partner with us in this opportunity.
Pastor Young, if I may, just for clarification, so the public understands what happens, as some of us on council have already seen firsthand, if you can explain what happens at the drop-off moment, depending on Stripes or at the Coalition itself, and how it's established where they're headed, and how the transaction, as far as the dollar amount, is received and then transmitted to purchase a ticket?
Yes, sir. At the, originally, when there were some being dropped off at Stripes, it, it made that, that population somewhat vulnerable to, not everyone in this, in this city is, is honest or wanting to be, you know, an upright citizen. There are opportunities to take advantage of these, this group of people, and we really wanted to give them a safe place to allow this transition to happen. So, through the having of the, working at the 1401 Las Bacas, when they, when they, basically, we, when they come in, we, we have many cell phones that we have that we have purchased, and basically, we just put them in contact. Most of them won't come with monetary monies on hand, so we put them in contact with the families, and through this, through all the GoPhones that we have, and through that, a lot of the families, 99% of the families, we've maybe had like one or two that we've helped, and that was not with very much money. It was just, they might have been short $15 or whatnot to help them get on the road. It was, it was a good investment for us to give them that $15 and allow them to keep moving. At no, we don't want to, we want to keep the overnights down as low as possible. We're trying to move them as quickly as possible, and they don't want to stay here. They want to move as quickly as possible as well.
And so, that's just for clarification purposes, because some of us in our offices, respective positions, do hear the comments that, that the city's paying, or that the county's paying for their tickets. And we just want to convey the message that these individuals do have the monetary means at their final destination for their point of contact or what have you, which is kind of prudent, that we do understand that we're on the same page, that we're not trying to get any funds to purchase for that transmission unless it's in lieu of the safety and security of the community, which was discussed last night at the county meeting. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that, that you've only helped one or two individuals out of maybe 2,000 persons that have transited through our community.
And the ones from, coming from Africa, they come money in hand, and they are ready to...
Ready to purchase.
Use that money to purchase and keep moving.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any comments or concerns before we pass it along to the School Board?
I just want to make a comment, thanking you all for the work that you're doing. I think everybody needs to understand, these people are getting there at whatever time it takes, 5:00 in the morning, 4:00, if somebody needs to get on an airplane, they're there late. Not everybody comes in completely healthy. These are the people that are facing, these people face-to-face, and you've had some members come down with the cold or, or maybe even the flu over time. So, they're, they're, you know, we're all making an effort, but these people are doing it just out of the goodness of their heart. Volunteer, volunteerism starts off real strong and it drops off. And there's very few of you, and it need, they need the support from all the citizens of Del Rio to keep this going for, as Chief Ortiz said, maybe 18 more months or longer. But we appreciate, I appreciate everything that you all have done for the city of Del Rio. Thank you.
Pastor Young, thank you. We'll pass it along to the School Board.
First and foremost, thank you for presenting today, and for your efforts, along with the volunteers that do such a great job here in our city. Any questions from board members at this time? Just thanks again for all you do and your volunteers. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any questions? Thank you so much.
No questions, and I'll figure this thing out in a minute. But I want to thank y'all, and it's nice to know that we have great Christians like y'all in this community that is willing to step up, because had you not, we would have a whole lot of people running around this town trying to figure something out. And that thought is very scary, and y'all are doing this out of the kindness of your heart, and a lot of times out of your own money. And this isn't, you know, they're right, this isn't money coming from the city or the county. This is coming from people, not just in this community, but all around this nation, who have stepped up and done the right thing. You know, we continue to hear all of the stuff that we hear on Facebook and the rhetoric and everything else, and trust me, I'm... and the rhetoric and everything else, and, and trust me, I'm just as angry, but my anger is directed at Washington, not at these people or anybody else, and I intend to voice my, my anger where it needs to be voiced, and not at the people that are trying their best to do something to do this, at the end of the day, we are America, whether you agree with this or you don't, whether the federal government has failed us or not, we are still America, and we need to step up and do what we have to do until the government fixes this problem, and I, I don't like the issue, but it's nice to know that we have people still in this country that are willing to do what it takes to do it, and are willing to donate their money, their time, and their effort, and I know y'all put a lot of hours in down there, uh, and I appreciate it, it does keep these people from roaming around our communities trying to, to figure things out, without these transitions, we would have chaos, so I, I do wanna thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Uh, school board members, uh, council, mayor, if you would allow us to suspend the rules and allow citizens' comments, uh, we would go ahead and make a motion and do that, if y'all would allow us to go ahead and get that done.
If we may, if we can, Judge, if we can each, each government group take, um, a vote, and we'll begin with yours.
Can you define the rules of that first, please?
Well, in the citizens' comments, we, we didn't, uh, when you post a special meeting, you don't need, and, and there's no, the, the citizens' comments are not posted when you do a special meeting, so if we can suspend that, that way we can listen to citizens' comments now that all of us are here, uh, and if you don't mind, we would start with a motion, and then we could go through each, through each entity.
Yeah, I think what I'm asking, I'm, I'm not arguing about that piece of it, I'm, what are the rules so that, so that we got some limitations?
Well, what we'll do, uh, if y'all don't mind, uh, we'll, we'll get a motion just to see if everybody wants to do it, and at that point, I think we can set up with some rules, maybe a two-minute time limit, uh, set aside forty minutes, uh, for everybody to speak, and, and then we'll just go from there, but if we can go ahead and at first, uh, get a motion from everybody.
Judge.
And then I will go ahead and, uh, if you don't mind, do the two minutes, and then a forty minutes, set aside a block of time of forty minutes.
Judge, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow citizens' comments for Valverde County and City of Del Rio residents only, this is not gonna become a, 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 a political platform, um, for two minutes, not to exceed forty minutes.
Second.
Commissioners, we have a motion by Commissioner Middleton, second by Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Council?
Council, I will, I will make the motion to suspend the rules to allow citizens' comments for two minutes for those individuals residing in Valverde County and the city of Del Rio, Texas, not to exceed forty minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those.
I have a comment, I have a comment. As long as it's, it pertains to the topic, correct?
Pertain to the topic.
Yes, as long as we're on.
Let me amend my motion, uh, we'll make a motion to suspend this rules for citizens' comments to allow for two-minute citizens' comments for all those citizens living and residing within the city of Del Rio, Texas, and the Valverde County area not to exceed forty minutes pertaining to the topic at hand.
I'll second.
And we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There are none, the motion carries. School board?
I make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for citizens' comments for a two-minute respective of some rules, so, um, everyone can be respectful, and, um, not be disrespectful or single out any elected official, as long as we have some parameters, um, I'd like to make that motion, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Webb, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Yeah, for the sake of clarity, there will not be any rebuttal, so it's just a status.
Yeah, all we can listen to is, is the citizens', we can't engage in conversation. Uh, is there anybody that would like to step up to the mic first? Yes, sir, come on up, Mr. Weathersby. I shouldn't have said Mister, Mister Weathersby, now I'm gonna have to try to remember everybody's name here.
Just for clarity.
Uh, thank y'all.
One moment, sir, just for the record, for the city council, to ensure that we do have a proper documentation, if you could ensure your, state your name, the city council, myself, the mayor, will have the timer set for this, and the judge will be, I will call the time, and the judge will continue the, the citizens' comment portion, just give me one moment. And you may begin.
My name is Lee Weathersby, I was a councilman for twelve years, and I wanna thank y'all for doing what you're doing, the, uh, I certainly wanna appreciate, uh, Chief of Police, Chief of, uh, Border Patrol, Mr. Ortiz, all the law enforcement agencies, and when I look out over the crowd, I see a lot of people here that have spent their life keeping this community safe, and that's what it's all about, one of them sitting right here is Bill White, he spent his, most of his life in the air, being sure that we were safe. Mr. Ortiz hit the nail on the head, I'm not up here to lecture or anything, I'm just kinda easing a little bit, and then I do have a recommendation. Safety is the key to our community, if you wanna know what rumors, and when it gets out that you have an unsafe community, even the perception of an unsafe community, all you have to do is look and see it at Acuna, for the last ten years, that has been known as an unsafe community, and it has decimated that community, they're our sisters, that's our brothers and sisters over there, we cannot allow that to happen to Del Rio, and I know every one of you up here, the first order of business for you is the safety of this community, I appreciate what you're going through, as Mr. Middleton said, it's not your fault, but it's your duty to be sure our children, grandchildren are safe, and I know you take that job seriously, and we, the voters, are the people who put you up there, and we trust that you're gonna do that and do what it takes to do this, now I do have one recommendation.
The time is up, sir.
I tried to get the school board to do this, but they weren't.
Mr. Weathersby, the time is up.
Super Jack Mayfield.
Oh, Mister Weathersby, Mister Weathersby, yeah, thank you.
Super Jack Mayfield, Del Rio.
Thank you, thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anybody else, please? Yes, sir. Please. Mister Garcia.
Member, thank you.
I did.
I wanna say thank you to the law enforcement, as everyone has heard, you know, the tremendous job they're doing, and we all understand that you all are in a very difficult position because none of you all alternatives are good, it's just which is the least bad, and the question on the agenda is using taxpayer funds for this, and that creates a problem for a lot of people, because nowhere yesterday or today has any tax unit said, I'm spending X, I'm spending Y, I'm taking it out of this budget, no one has told us what you're gonna do with the money that you all are requesting, no one has told us you're gonna take it out of this line item, you know, here in a few months, you all are gonna set the tax rate, and I got a notice from the appraisal district that said, my house is worth eleven thousand dollars more, okay, I'm sure all of the other taxpayers got a letter from the appraisal district, and said, your house is now worth more, are you gentlemen gonna tell us the tax rate is going up because we're spending money on this project? When are you gonna tell us what you're gonna do? I mean, we've had a rah-rah session for law enforcement, and they deserve it, yes, they do, but when are you gonna tell me I'm gonna spend ten thousand dollars a month for the next eighteen months? Are you gonna tell us we're gonna spend fifty thousand a month for the next two years? I mean, the sector chief said this problem's gonna last eighteen months, do you have the funds to manage this for eighteen months? Do any of you? No, you don't, and let me tell you, none of these citizens have the money either, and we don't want our money spent this way, at least that's my point of view, okay? So, I'm asking you, you either give us more details, or you do not spend our money in this fashion, because this is not why we put you in office, we put you in office to be steward for.
Mister Garcia, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, again, like the mayor said, you'll state your name, that way.
Okay, my name's Valerie Rodriguez, um, and I was like way back there, so I couldn't see who actually made a comment earlier about how, um, you wanted to get them moved out quicker, so my frustration is, I hear a lot of people, and I see a lot of things on Facebook, of everybody commenting and saying, well, we need to get them out, and we need this, and even our elected officials tonight saying that, Pastor Shaun is doing an amazing job, those volunteers are doing an amazing job, giving up times with their family, with their friends, doing time out of work to go and get these people out as quickly as possible, and they are getting them out quickly, I was there Sunday, I received fifty-four Africans, and I received seventeen Central Americans in the morning, and we got them out by one o'clock, they got there at eleven, so there should be no reason why everybody is complaining about them not getting moved faster, go, go and volunteer, that, that's my point, if you have something to say, go to the, the Coalition, volunteer, see what's happening, help put that time in and get them moved out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mister Rodriguez.
Is there anybody else, please? Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mister White, then.
My name is Bill White, I live in the county, not in the city, I came to meeting last night, and I honestly got fired up more than after I left than what I was when I was here. I spent the afternoon writing letters, I'm gonna make it all the same, and I suggest that everybody else do the same thing, I wanna write letters to our state senator, well, our federal senators in the state, John Cornyn and Ted Cruz, gonna write letters to our representative, Will Hurd, and anybody else, and the reason and the contempt of this letter is what is going on here, not only what is going on there, but why are they stonewalling us without funds? FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, is the one that should be helping us, and I'm sure there's other ones out there that will do it too, and I suggested everybody write to them, everybody has the internet, you can get their address, you can get their phone numbers, and if they get a barrage of three or four hundred from Valverde County, that would be great, phone calls, they have the numbers too, so, use the phones, use the internet, write letters, and let them know what we think, ask them for help, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister White.
Good evening, I'm Justin Hollis, I'm Congressman Will Hurd's district director.
Is he from here?
That gentleman's right, uh, FEMA.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, that wasn't the motion.
Could you come up?
Go back.
The actual item, because I would like to be able to question you, and I can't do that here.
I will sit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Hollis.
Jess, uh, Mister, Mister Sangala, I think you were getting up, or no?
Yes, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank all the organizations, the volunteers, and the people that are helping these people, this is a very giving and compassionate country that we live in, what I wanna know is where are our representatives in Washington? This is a federal thing, and I think it should be coming from Washington, the help that these people need, and not from our local communities, I mean, we're a small community, and, uh, our tax base here is not that great to where the point to where we can support and keep helping these people, I wanna know why our representatives are not here, that was all I have to say.
Thank you, Mister Sangala.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else, please? Come on up, somebody's waving their hand, Becker. Watch the cable on the camera. Yes, ma'am, if you'll just state your name, please, before you get started.
Good evening to all of you, my name is Gloria Villegas, I'm a citizen of Del Rio, I was born, raised, and educated here, I am a retired nurse, I worked at our local hospital for approximately thirty years in the intensive care unit, special procedures lab, and I am here because I am passionate about the coalition that we have and what they're doing to help these people, I know that all of us are a little bit frustrated about what's happening, and what's happening at our borders, but, um, all I can tell you is that it is happening, it's at our doorstep, they're already here, we have to take care of these people, we have to extend a helping hand, like the Good Samaritan, we were taught by our parents that all of us, all of us here come from immigrants, unless we are native-born Indians, we are all immigrants of the United States of America, and as far as immigrants, we should welcome these people, we should open our doors to them, we need your help, uh, yes, there are many frustrations, there are many things that are being said around our community, things that hurt us, things that bother us, things that frustrate us, but I'm not here because of that, I'm here to ask, as leaders of this country, we all need to stand up, be brave about what we're going to do about this, it's not our problem, it's not, everyone says it's not our problem.
Mrs. Villegas, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We have a gentleman walking up, so before anybody else gets up.
Hi there, my name is Joseph Bond, I'm about a long-term resident, only about twenty-two years, and, uh, I've heard from the Border Patrol and the Sheriff's Department that finances are stressed, we already paying enough, we're paying for kids that don't live over here to come to school over here, now they say private school, Catholic school, that's not true, I see a bus parked in an apartment building over here, and the kids from junior high and high school walk over and get in that bus, so, enforce the law, also, they are not our responsibility, that's, it's okay for private individuals to do what they gotta do, but don't go giving our tax money to somebody we, some invaders that we did not ask to come here, they're being paid for by Open Borders Society, you know, and, just remember, keep your taxpayers in mind, vote red.
Thank you, sir, is there anybody else, please? We got one more coming from the back.
Hi, I'm Mary Johnson, and we're retired military here in the community, my concern is, are we making it easy to come here? I mean, giving them transportation out of here, giving them housing, giving them food, are we welcoming them here to our community, is that what we're doing? I mean, if I say come to Del Rio, I'm gonna put you up, I'm gonna feed you, I'm gonna give you transportation, I'm just kinda scared about the message we're sending.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else, yes, ma'am?
My name's Angela Prather, um, thank you, county, city, and school district for allowing us to speak, I wanna speak about our citizens, um, I've put a lot of time here with, uh, trying to keep everybody safe, healthy, um, as well as help with the people who need help that are our citizens, I please ask of you, first of all, remember our citizens, we have the WIC, we have women that need help, we have children that need help, we have families that need help here, that are our citizens and citizens of the United States, please do not forget them, and also, health-wise, I ask for y'all to be very vigilant with, um, protecting yourself, including the Coalition and the volunteers, protect yourself, because there is incubation periods, I don't wanna put in a mask, everybody's, everything's okay right now, but we need to be safe, and practice infection control, um, and the volunteers, you need to use gloves and masks, it's the right thing to do, because we don't want you getting sick, we don't want anybody getting sick, we don't want anybody getting hurt, or anybody to die, and, um, yes, I put our. And yes, I put our citizens first. So please, keep in mind, our citizens in need when you make your decisions. Thank you.
Ms. Prather, would you please state your occupation? That the way, that the way everybody understands what, what you come from?
Well, I'm here as an individual-
Yes, ma'am.
-today. I do many things. I'm part of the county fire, I'm part of emergency management. I used to be EMS, but I'm, I'm retiring from that. I am a public information officer for the hospital, and, but I am a community member tonight.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Prather.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Martin. I have lived in Del Rio for almost forty years. I'm a resident of the city. I have had a very great career here. I've worked hard to provide for my family. I think every citizen here has. I would also like to thank all our first responders and our law enforcement, everyone that keeps our streets safe. We're very grateful to all of them. It's very important that you, as our elected officials, realize that lots of us struggle for every dollar we pay in taxes. I am one of those people. Many of us are widowed, we're alone, we have a house that we thought we could afford twenty years ago, and we're struggling to pay, afford it today. I asked you to not spend our tax dollars on this, but I also charge our community. We're all good people. We help our next-door neighbors. There's plenty of people here in Del Rio that our tax dollars can't support them. All these organizations that need your money first, these people have, have changed our lives. They live here in Del Rio, they're trying to make a living, they need a little helping hand, and they're citizens. Now, me as a Christian, I'm still gonna help the Coalition. I think we need to reach deep in our personal pockets and help them, but I ask you, please, do not spend my tax dollars on illegals when we need to spend it on our American society. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Vivaiejo. I think that we need to stop for a moment, and we need to realize that the majority of these people that are coming, yes, they have money, but a lot of them are being paid to come, because it's profitable for organizations here. So I think that we need to call up those people, like Centros Infronteras, La Familia Latina Unida, LULAC, Pueblos Infronteras, Cara, Caritas, the Catholic charities, the Episcopal charities, because at the very beginning and inception of this, they got paid for each person they brought. They received money, and these people were given money. I helped find the paperwork and fill out the paperwork for Syrians, and we cannot continue this. We cannot make these people welcomed in our country unless we are accepting to take care of them forever. So we need to put a limit, and that's what we want you to do, because you're handling our money, our taxpayer money, and if you just let it out, this is not gonna stop tomorrow. This is not gonna stop in eighteen months. I've been saying this for ten years. At the beginning, the government would build buildings for them and house them and give them a monthly check, give them a check at the border so they could get where they were going. Now, all of a sudden, they're not doing that? Why is it that they get bought and paid for and brought here? And when they get here, they get an attorney? What happens to that money? And you know what? It's the government that is giving them the grants, because it is convenient for certain politicians to get votes. So you need to stop.
Ms. Villegas, your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Is there, is there anybody else, please?
Hello, I'm Crystal Antu. I work in healthcare. My only question is, and I think we just gotta keep the conversation going off of what Angie Prather said, if there is a diagnosis for a very communicable disease, a very deadly disease, what is the protocol? And how does that affect not only our agents, but the families who they come home to, our firemen and everybody else who's serving, our EMTs who are exposed? And what's the protocol? How do we, is there a protocol to get those people out quicker once they have a diagnosis? Or how are we handling that? That's my only question.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Antu.
Anybody else?
Judge, for the record, we have twenty minutes and fourteen seconds remaining in the forty minutes allotted.
Yeah, I'm Roger Johnson, retired military, been here about sixteen years. I want to piggyback on the tax money issue as well. We're already paying taxes to the federal government, so we are funding this. We don't need to do it again, get double taxed on this issue. In addition, the chief back there said eighteen months. Excuse me. Don't even believe, like that lady just said, that is not the end of it. That is not the end of it. Even if the Republicans or whoever take over, and they say we're gonna change the asylum laws, there will be court injunctions, and it won't stop that day. It won't. This is gonna go on for decades. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Is there anybody else? As soon as we get done with this, we're, we'll see about opening it back up and go back to the agenda item, if y'all don't mind.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rhonda Hargrove, and I certainly agree with the woman about, who brought them here in the first place, who got them here. What I'd like to know is, where are they going to court when they get that court date? And if they don't have the money to get out of here, how are they gonna have the money to come back?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else?
My name is Cliff Spencer, and I'm a resident of the county. I feel bad for these people, I really do. They come here because they've been sold bill goods in their home country. Come to America. Those streets are lined with gold. Milk and honey runs out of the faucets. But the fact is, they've been lied to, and this whole thing's a freaking scam. Eight, over ninety percent of these people do not qualify for asylum under our current law. They're being released into society, and they will not show up for their hearing. ICE and Border Patrol are overwhelmed. They cannot go find these people after they've been released and repatriate them. I'm grateful for the work that the Coalition's doing. I'm grateful for the work that our law enforcement is doing, but it's a scam. And not one penny of our tax money should be used to perpetuate immigration fraud, and that's exactly what this is. It's immigration fraud. These people are lying, they have no intention of showing up for their hearing, and are gonna disappear, and are gonna be living in our neighborhood, not our neighborhood, everybody else's neighborhoods, and it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ker Wardlaw. I just realized something with this last speaker. Before voting on giving our tax dollars to the county, maybe request from the state of Texas for tax dollars and see what kind of answer you get.
Thank you, Mr. Wardlaw.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Okay. We, where? Sir? No, sir.
Judge, at the summit, I do not see anybody else rising for a citizen comment. The time has been, we have sixteen minutes and three minutes remaining, but the time is now twenty, I'm sorry, eight twelve.
School board members, council, mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to the actual item that we were discussing. That way we can probably answer some of the questions that were, were asked and probably shed a little bit of light, if possible. Mayor, I don't know if you want us to go first, or school board, or what, but, uh...
Figure this out in a minute. Uh, I think, yeah. Oh, he's the guy. I'm over here pushing buttons for nothing. I, I believe we have some people I would like to listen to from Congressman Hurd's office, and I believe Senator Cornyn's office are here.
If, before we go to that, if you don't, y'all don't mind, I was jotting down, uh... y'all don't mind, do you? Y'all okay? Okay. I was jotting down some of the concerns. You know, first, I mean, I do believe that our laws are broken. The protocol for disease, one of them brought it up, they're not being released. The court dates, where are they going? And are they gonna come back? The dates that they've been given are, and the places that they say they're going to, are they gonna show up? Probably not. But they're not gonna be here, they don't have to come back. One of the other deals was, we are giving them transportation. I think there's only been two or maybe three people that the transportation has been paid for in order to get them out of Del Rio. We did ask for STAR, which is the Health Department, state of Texas, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We visited with them on Friday, wanted to know how, why they would not help screen these individuals before they get put out into the United States. Whether they're here or not, they're still gonna be put out, and we were told until there's an epidemic, they're not going to step in. Okay? The individual just came up and said that there's five, ten percent that qualify, or eighty percent or whatever that don't, but the, the people that are, that actually qualify for asylum, the numbers that we're getting are somewhere in the five to, to ten percent that do, will qualify. It's, it's a decision that will be made later on. The problem with that is, though, that they are out in our community. Whether they're here or whatever, they're still gonna be out. You know, we, all of us, I think all of us can agree that, that we don't want to use any money. I just, my opinion again, is that how do I allow them to, to go into our community? That's, you know, everybody's safe, 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 do, it's just difficult. It's just difficult. How do, and, and we're all gonna be put in a position at some point that we're gonna have to make a decision. One of the other concerns, Mr. Garcia, you know, and we talked a little bit last night on the amount of money, where and everything, before we make that decision, I know as a court and probably as a council, before we make any decision to set aside money, there will be parameters, and it will be, you know, y'all are gonna know what it's gonna be used for, how much money's gonna be set aside, and how long. And if there is any money, if there is any money set aside at the beginning, it will be posted. As far as Commissioner's Court, we, I posted it on Commissioner's Court, because I didn't know what was gonna happen here, so it's been posted on Commissioner's Court for Monday's meeting, to see if we can come up with an idea. But it's only fair that if we do anything, that the public is, is informed how much money we set aside, what it's going to be used for, and it needs to be specific. Okay? And I think those were all the questions that I had. I think all the rest of them, all, all the rest of them, it was just repetition. The transportation deal, I think, is going to be the most important thing. We need to be able to, to get them out. I think now, I, you know, Mr. Garza, with all the buses and everything we have running, I mean, it's gonna be close to getting everybody out, right?
It's improved significantly. The, the concern is that if they're waiting for funds, then they may have to overnight, which I know Shaun is experiencing with respect to the sheltering. That's typically been the case, that they're waiting for funds to arrive in order to proceed.
And, and then the other lady back there, you know, about getting them out, there's no way on God's green earth that I would throw rocks at the Coalition, because without them, we'd have these people roaming our streets, and it's that simple. So the Coalition is doing a, just a massive job trying to take care of these people, you know, I think it was twenty-six hundred, right?
About that. Totally processed?
Yeah, that have been processed. So, uh, there's no way that, I don't think any of us up here would throw rocks, especially, you know, myself. But in saying that, Mayor?
And I, I just want to convey the message as well, and piggyback on the judge, is that the city has not budgeted anything at this time, Mr. Garcia and, and everybody else in the audience, because we haven't had this conversation at all. This is the first time that we're discussing even any financial conversation piece with, with the respective government entities. And the reason why the school board is included in this conversation piece is because we were looking for facilities in the event that the city runs out of space. We, we have limited civil facilities, and it is the intention not to use the civic center, for example, or any other civil building within our community, and we do know that the school board does have some vacant facilities outside the city limits that they are willing to look at and possibly offer to help with these efforts, which is one of the reasons why the school board is here. I want to convey the message that we are not asking for monetary funds from the education system whatsoever. They're not gonna be getting any, we're not gonna be requesting from them any, any requests for financial assistance regarding that. So I just want to make sure that, that the public is completely understanding and we're transparent with that. We're just asking for the facilities that are vacant in lieu of that. Also, just to convey the message and to clarify the scenario with the Joe Ramos Center, the city is currently administering that in the overflow event due to the city code that we do have to comply with as far as the Chihuahua Center is, when we do receive the, the migrants after hours and when the Coalition is closed or what have you, and we do have an overflow scenario, we do open up to the Joe Ramos Center. And, and that is the capacity that we're at right now. We have not had to use a third facility. We had not have to have, we have yet to have a capacity issue where we need that third building, but this conversation piece is here with them now in that event, just to at least have that conversation piece going for the backup plan. This is, this is a scenario that all entities have not had to manage in his, in, in the past. This is a historic event that's happening, and we're witnessing in real time. And, and as everything happens in real time, the, the, the needs change daily. We initiated the conversation April eighteenth as council. The numbers then were only five to ten, and then within a week, they were up to twenty, twenty-thirty, and then a weekend later, it was sixty, and we had to, we had to open up the Joe Ramos Center, for example. And I was there with Councilman Garza, along with Superintendent Rios. We had to facilitate the needs with the school bus to transport them to the, to... I'm giving you an example of the daily needs that are changing, because it is our, our priority as council, as your city council, mayor, that we do want to keep our streets safe. We want to keep our streets secure. We do not want to have family units, we don't want to have anybody out there roaming the streets. And, and as the perception goes, we do not want to have that perception that our community is not safe. We do have a safe community, and these migrants are in, in one location at best. That being said, the, the Coalition is doing a phenomenal job getting these migrants out of the community as quickly as possible. I witnessed it myself. I've seen them. I've transported them when I had some hours available to the airport, to the, to the Greyhound Center. They, we are not, the city is not giving them funds at this time. So I want to clarify the fear or the notion that we're, that we're using taxpayer dollars at this time. It's in the event to help facilitate the, the expedition, the expeditedness of getting individuals out of our community so that we're not overwhelming the Coalition, so that we're not overwhelming the police, the Sheriff's Department, et cetera. That is the message that I want to convey for the community. School board, if you would like to add any comments regarding the citizens' comments or anything to the-
Absolutely. I think first and foremost, we have not allocated any funds whatsoever from our budget. As you know, historically, we need to new schools. We tried to pass a bond, passed, passed years. Were not able to, were not successful. We have not any, allocated any line item on our budget. I think safety is the utmost concern. You know, when we talk about communicable diseases, and we want to make sure that all our children, children are safe, and I think Ms. Prather made a significant point in regard to healthcare and treatment if, if it's needed. But I, I just want to reiterate again that we have not allocated any funds whatsoever. Any line item on our budget is not targeting this, this concern. Thank you.
Mayor, school board, if we could call them up in case we have questions, if you don't mind? Would y'all come up? Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Oh, we have a question.
Go ahead and come on up, though. You've already stood up three times. Get an exercise.
Yeah, come on, this won't take long. I want to clarify a rumor that was going around on social media today, that the school district was going to go in and be leasing out or using two gymnasiums to house individuals. And that is completely false, and I speak for myself, and I'm pretty sure I speak for the rest of the board up here, that it will not do anything of that nature, their, of, of- the rest of the board up here, that it will not do anything of that nature, of using school facilities or areas where our children are located to go in and house migrants on their way through. So I want to put that rumor to rest, please. That is not going to happen.
Thank you, Dr. Olufelt. Gentlemen?
All right. Good evening. My name's Justin Hollis, I'm Congressman Willard, District Director. I want to thank CBP, BP, all the volunteers for the issues that y'all are dealing with. You can be rest assured, this is an issue, although we're not here every single day that we have dealt with since it has begun. This is an issue that is at the feet and the fault of the federal government, we recognize Last week, my boss signed onto a letter with every other member of Congress from San Diego to Brownsville for the supplemental appropriations bill for DHS, for FEMA, to add federal dollars to reimburse local communities that are dealing with this issue. So, heard a lot of concerns about tax dollars, how the federal government should be paying for this. That is going to go through the appropriations process in the House, the same way it was done in 2014, that passed. So we hope to rectify that problem. That's the first one. This issue is caused by the federal government and its outdated asylum laws. So we've introduced a bill this week to fix that. The main fix is that folks traveling, seeking asylum, who travel through a contiguous country with the United States, meaning Canada and Mexico, have to ask for asylum in those countries. And whether accepted or denied, are denied in this country, which would drastically decrease the current problem we have there. On top of that, it also fixes frivolous asylum claims, it removes obstacles for, that prevents DHS from removing to safe third countries. So that's issue number two. Third one is Stone Garden Funds. Currently with Stone Garden Funds, Sheriff Joe Frank is not allowed to use those funds to hire more personnel, police officers and all that. We have signed on to fix that, so that any Stone Garden Funds that are used for local communities by county or municipal cops can use those funds to hire more cops, more personnel, to better assist Border Patrol, CBP in these local communities. That's what I have.
Commissioners, Mayor, Council. My name's Jonathan Hune, I'm Regional Director for Senator John Cornyn. I cover the El Paso to Corpus Christi area, just a small suburb of the greater zip of Texas. And we realize that each and every one of you have different operational challenges with all that's going on right now. Even just before I was here, I was on the phone with the City of San Antonio hearing about the most recent update they have. I just want to reassure you guys that each and every day, the Senator is going to the floor of the Senate highlighting what is taking place, how the recent numbers that have come out of CBP for last month and the month of May, how they had 144,000, 145,000 apprehensions last month. The Senator has, much like the Congressman, has been in support of getting a DHS emergency supplemental funding measure. Just today, President Trump signed a bill for emergency disaster aid. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get additional funds as a part of that. We're looking anywhere between $4 to $4.5 billion to help and assist cities in and around the southern border. What the Senator has been doing recently, he does have at this moment in time, the one and only bipartisan-supported bill between Senator Cornyn and Congressman Henry Cuellar, called the Humane Act. In the short term, what they're trying to do is establish regional processing centers in high-traffic areas to make certain that, one, we are getting more immigration judges, because we have very, very few immigration judges that are actually handling the capacity. And as I mentioned, at 144,000, you're seeing a lot of these refugees given what's called an I-862, which is an NTA, Notice to Arrive, excuse me, Notice to Appear Later in Court, but that is several months down the line. That has to change, where individuals are going to a processing center, they are given a court date at that processing center, and then seen an immigration judge immediately. Additionally, the bill calls for hiring 600 CBP personnel members. We have to upgrade our ports of entry, we have to give CBP the resources they need, and we have to get more immigration judges to deal with this situation now. And this bill, the Senator is going to continue to push, and as I mentioned, it's the only bipartisan bill that's supported right now, between both parties. I'm more than happy to send additional information on this legislation to each and every one of you following this meeting, as the Senator was commenting on the floor of the Senate on this legislation not more than 24 hours ago, highlighting it and trying to gain more support for it. That being said, on top of the supplemental funding, the Humane Act, we are more than happy to take any questions you might have from Mr. Hollis and myself.
I got questions.
Yes, sir.
The bill that you're talking about for the funding also had in it a amnesty bill that I believe y'all sponsored or voted for.
You referred to HR 6, the House of Representatives put forward, that was not part of the supplemental FEMA legislation.
But that other bill is moving forward, the amnesty bill?
That bill passed the House of Representatives?
Will it pass the Senate?
But from everything that I'm hearing, sir, the majority of the Senate is not bringing that up for vote.
You know, I'm glad to see that y'all are down here and at least trying to get funds. I, I, I mean, you had this conversation at the last time you showed up here. In my opinion, the entire federal government, and it's not just y'all's, the entire federal government has failed the American people from the top to the bottom. It is a sad day when we're sitting in a room like this, and our community is mad at us because y'all have failed to do your job, and we are having to try to figure out how to deal with this issue. I appreciate any funds that come down here, but at the end of the day, they're still all taxpayers' money, whether they come from us or y'all, it's still the same pot of money. It is time, and I don't care what party you're from, that y'all get together and do what's right for this country. Because that's what this is about. It doesn't matter if you're Democrat, Republican, Independent, I don't care what you are. This is about this country.
Yes, sir.
And doing what's right. We have a constitution that we are supposed to protect and defend our borders. It is time that we do that job.
Yes, sir.
And people have the right to apply for asylum, people have the right to come to America, and I welcome anybody that wants to when they do it the right way. But we now have hundreds of thousands of people that will be released into our communities in whatever form or fashion that we will never find again. And at some point, somebody's going to float a bill to just give everybody citizenship. And that ain't right.
Yes, sir.
We have to be able to track these people. We have to get them through the court system, and you're right, we don't have enough courts to deal with this issue, not even close to deal with this issue. And we've known this issue has gone on for quite a while, and we haven't funded the court system to support it. Had we funded the court system to support it, we wouldn't be sitting here today. We'd be able to get them in, get them out, and get them moving. It is time that Washington does its job, once and for all. And I don't care where you sit on this issue, at the end of the day, it is about protecting the American people and doing the right thing. People from anywhere in the world are welcoming this country as long as they do it the right way. Everybody else, they need to go home and come back and do it the right way. We can't continue to open our borders and let people in the way we're letting them in. You want to apply for asylum, you can do it in your home country. And if you're granted asylum, then you can come to America. It can't be this system that we have with this revolving door. It's not fair to, to, you know, we're trillions of dollars in debt on the federal level, trillions. And we're funding everybody else's stuff in the world except ours. And there is no excuse for that. We have vets dying in our streets. We have completely disgraced the people, and it's ironic that we're holding this on D-Day. The people that fought and died for this country can't get the benefits that the people that walk across that border illegally get. There is no excuse for that. And it is time that y'all get together, however it is, and I don't care, and do the right thing. Y'all had y'all's chance.
If I may comment also. Mr. Hune, this is the first time that we conversate after that one morning that I, that we had our conversation. That was a very frustrating conversation that I had with you. And Mr. Hollis, I haven't had the pleasure to conversate with you directly, but I do call Representative Hurd directly regularly to convey the message of my frustration that I have with the federal government right now. And Mr. Hune, I had asked you to come see firsthand the Coalition and what they're experiencing. I had asked that you go see firsthand and walk through what the Border Patrol is walking through, walk through the system of release, walk through the Coalition, walk through the judicial process, because the senators aren't here. And I know Representative Willard does come down and speak with us when he can, but the senators haven't come down here, and they need to see firsthand what's going on. They need to understand the frustrations that the Commissioners Court, that the City Council, that the School Board, Hospital District are managing, having to deal with. I called you that morning, and I asked you for the check. I asked you for the check to give them back to the School Board for that bus usage, for that staff member that had to come in and bus these people from the Coalition to the Joe Ramos Center. I asked you for a check for the Joe Ramos Center specifically itself. We do not have the funds to fund this project that has manifested and been dumped here in the city of Del Rio, Texas, Valverde County, and the entire border. And we're frustrated. We're extremely frustrated. Our priorities as a City Council are our streets, are our parks, are the economy, are the drive of the community, and the places of worship, and the places to have leisure activities. It is not the priority to solve immigration. That is, the representatives are at the federal level's job and priority. And I will not stand for, audience, please, I appreciate the applause, but I will not stand for having to be dumped and find a solution as mayor and as a county judge for immigration. It is not our purview, it is not our jurisdiction. It is your job to ensure that you convey the frustration that I share with you all, to ensure that representatives at the federal level are hearing us. It's falling on deaf ears, and we're tired of it. We are sick and tired of the deaf ear. And all this stuff that you're passing, all this paper pushing that's going on, it's happening in real time. Real-time needs, and they're ever-changing. We needed translators, we needed Portuguese and French translators last weekend, where were they? I've given you proposals to bring in CBP officers from destinations as a flight attendant that I've seen firsthand in Winnipeg, in Vancouver, in Calgary, in Edmonton, Shannon, Dublin, Dubai. We have CBP officers right now in Dubai that can process asylum-seeking opportunities here at our port of entry and assist Port Director Flores. Why are they stationed over there still? Why has that not been brought up to attention to bring them down here and stop the deployment of our CBP officers to completely live a lavish lifestyle in these foreign countries? Our border is physical, and it's here. Any passenger crossing through those entry points to pre-cleared customs can continue the custom clearance at a national airport within our borders. We need these CBP officers right now. Am I understood as this frustration? If we close down another port of entry on any border port of entry, whether it be San Diego, Del Rio, Texas, or Matamoros, Brownsville area, it will devastate the entire economy, not just locally, but statewide and nationally. We cannot afford to devastate the entire economy, we cannot afford it. Americans do not realize or understand how big our trading partner, Mexico, is. We receive, we, Del Rio and see the trade daily. We need our senators to come see this regularly. We need them down here to understand the complexities that are currently existing in our community. I'm done.
And you're 100% right, Mayor. To be, to be honest, I would be even more frustrated than you. I get it, and working with Congressman Cornyn's office?
Real quick, real quick.
Yes, sir.
That's pretty good, Mayor. It really is. I don't know much, I don't know how much attention.
Tell us how you feel.
Good job. Yeah, I don't know how much attention you're going to get, but maybe if you keep barking, maybe somebody will listen.
I talk to Congressman, or to Representative Willard regularly, and I, he hears it, as does Mr. Hune, because I have yet to hear from Senator Cornyn directly, and I will gladly share the frustration with him as well.
Certainly.
Along with Senator Cruz.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, not a problem, Judge, not a problem. But making certain, for example, the Amistad dam bridge is open this Saturday, that was something that we did push with CBP. Senator Cornyn has pushed back to the President that he's opposed to the Mexican tariffs, because we know how detrimental that would be to the business economy. Because we do want to make certain that we're also not devastating the Texas economy as well as the Mexican economy at the same time. We can put our heads together, come up with a solution to address this situation. That's why the Senator does have bipartisan legislation to address this. Because if we also crash the peso, sir, that's going to be definitely the opposing economy as well, as well as $5.3 billion in cost that those tariffs would put on the Texas economy, and hundreds of thousands of jobs from farmers to manufacturers that would be impacted as a result of those five, to possibly 25% tariffs.
Mr. Hune, I just want to comment. So kudos to getting the Amistad reservoir reopened for the port of entry. We appreciate that as a community. But Port Director Flores just mentioned, she's understaffed.
You're right.
So what's going to, what good does it do if we're going to open up a port of entry and a couple of asylum seekers bypass the little checkpoint on the Mexican side, and we have to deploy our three officers from the main port of entry, our revenue source, over there? What good does it do? We need extra staff. We don't need it to be reopened any more than we need more staffers here today.
And what I can say to that is that the Senator is calling for 600 new CBP personnel to be hired in the border section.
Yeah, and I'm just going to chime in real quick, too. We recently signed on for a directive for DHS to include Del Rio and Sanderson into a COLA adjustment because it's part of the oil field, so that CBP has, no longer has such large issues with retention, they're going to get paid more and hopefully stay here. Doesn't help with new, but it keeps those that are currently here. Now, look, to everyone's frustration, we both work for a body that is less liked than a root canal. Like, we recognize that.
You got that one right.
But every time you call Congressman Hurd, every time Judge Owens calls Congressman Hurd, we have a conversation. I've been in this job for six months, I've been here no less than eight times, twice with Congressman Hurd. And, you know, it's not enjoyable to get raked over the coals, and, you know, I seem to do it all the time. But we care. Things that we do are slow, I get that, that's the government. But if there's anything outside of legislation or speaking to directors in any government agency, give us a call.
And I just want to reiterate one more time, every time that we're having to have these meetings with the Border Patrol, the CBP, right here in this open thing, we are taking time away as council, as the school district, as the county, away from them. These are the people that we know and recognize every single day. They're asking for streets, they're asking for better parks, they're asking for better schools, they're asking for all of these resources, and right now, we're having a conversation about immigration. It is not our purview, it's not our jurisdiction. Do you understand the frustration that this council, that this county, that this School Board and this Hospital Board is experiencing? She just brought up a very valid point. What do we do if there's a health crisis? The state of Texas is not going to send us any funding until there's an epidemic. How realistic is that? I told the TDM Director, and I know this is not federal, but I told the state director himself, I said, "You have just inherited a health crisis, and it is not on my hands." Because I know that I did the right thing by calling you and advising you that there may be potentially a health crisis. The Border Patrol needs more screeners, they need translators. We're experiencing immigrants from all over the world entering through our southern border. We need French speakers, we need Portuguese speakers, we need Arabic speakers, we need all of these resources available that the city, county, and the school district simply cannot fund. We need them now. We don't need them six months from now. We don't need funding for officers, for 600 officers six months later. We need the funding, and we need the officers today. We needed them yesterday.
It, um...
Thank you, Mayor.
I know, sorry. Counsel, you have any comments or concerns, or School Board?
I have a couple of questions.
Mayor, hold on just a minute. I just, I just heard something that upset me. Congress is slow, that Washington is slow. It amazes me that when there is a crisis somewhere in the world, how quickly we can deploy funds and people to deal with that crisis. In an instant, we can pass a funding bill to spend hundreds of billions of dollars anywhere in the world except America.
Absolutely.
So don't tell me it's slow. What it really is, is it ain't a priority. There's a difference between slow and a priority. I've been in government for a long time. I know slow, and I know a priority, and I can, it's amazing how quick you can put funding together when it's for something you want. We didn't have any problem building walls in Syria, we didn't have any problem sending relief to everywhere else in the world, and we did it, just like that. And we're going to fight over tariffs, I mean, I don't even want to go down that road because I could care less if they put 100% tariff. Because if that's what it takes to stop this... this, then so be it. These countries, y'all can't sit there and come down here and say that we can't function in Washington, and we can't do stuff, because I know you can. I have watched the funding bills get passed for things that we want funded. So that is not something I'm gonna buy, because I guarantee you, if we're really true, honest bipartisanship like we talk about, we can get a funding bill passed in probably a week or less. There's money to do this, and y'all know it, and we know it. It's just a matter of making it a priority and getting it done. That's the difference. It ain't a priority. And we're not gonna quit screaming until it becomes a priority.
Thank you, Commissioner Nettleton.
Real quick, Mayor, we'll go through and see if any of the other commissioners have any comments, and then we'll just take it over to y'all, if y'all don't mind. Commissioners, are you okay?
I mean, we can get up here and scream and everything all we want, but it's up to y'all. I mean, y'all have -- shit, y'all have put us in a bind. I mean, I don't know how else to put it. You just heard Commissioner Nettleton go off, and the mayor. I don't know how you follow that, but I hope that you understand that we're frustrated, and what we're getting. It's not y'all's fault, but it's your boss's fault. What we're getting is just a lot of hot air. I mean, shit's broke. I mean, excuse my language, but it's -- we can't sustain this. I mean, even if we were to throw money at it, it's not gonna be possible. We can't sustain it. Y'all need to get together. One of the comments that I heard the other day is, "Last one in, first one out." Get 'em out. I mean, I made the comment the other day of closing the border to asylum seekers. I don't care. You know, we have to do something. We can't continue down this road. And I know you're hearing it from everybody, but we just cannot continue. You know, both of them have said, you know, we shouldn't be put in this position. I had a conversation with Congressman Hurd two weeks ago, and I don't know how it became our fault. I don't know how it became our problem. But we need answers. We need a plan. And we have not heard a plan. I mean, it's one of those deals that we're, you know, we're getting a lot of lip service, and we really do appreciate y'all coming down. We do. But damn, where's the plan? I mean, we shouldn't be up here, and I damn sure shouldn't have to look out. And I get the phone calls, and we're divided, even in our own city, whether we help, we don't help. This should not be our problem, and we shouldn't be sitting here. I mean, I just don't -- I don't understand. I mean, it blows my mind, even at our state level, you know, we get the health concern, like she brought up a little while ago, and we're -- until there's an epidemic was the answer we got on Friday? What kind of damn answer is that? I mean, it doesn't make sense, you know, and, you know, I'm trying to hold back, because I love to cuss, and I could riff y'all a new one. I'm not going to. But y'all do understand. I mean, it's frustrating. We should not be put in this position. I don't know what else to say. I mean, it's just, you know, if you'll take the message back, that it's unbelievable. We should not be put in this position.
Yes, and we just want to make certain that every one of you, we keep a line of communication open. We're more than happy to relay any and all information to our bosses to convey, because as I mentioned, less than 24 hours ago, and daily, Senator Cornyn's on the floor of the Senate, talking about this issue, talking about trying to make certain it's out of the hands of local communities, trying to make certain that the federal government handles this, trying to get more of his colleagues on board to address this, because we have to get all of Congress on board to address it. You always have Senator Cornyn supporting more, being able to address this, and trying to get more CBP resources to the border, more immigration judges to the border. And he's trying to do so in a bipartisan, bicameral capacity. And I understand that's just talking legislation, Judge. I wish I had a caravan of individuals behind me that showed up with me in town. I can only convey what's going on on the Hill and be that middleman for you guys at this point in time. But night or day, we're available to convey this to Washington, to make certain our bosses are beating the dais on the House or Senate floor.
Mayor.
Thank you, Judge. Counsel, I believe Councilman DeRusse does have a comment, and then the rest of counsel can comment as well.
So you mentioned a couple of bills that you're sponsoring. First, the appropriations bill. Is that going through the normal process, or is that a special appropriations bill? Is it clean?
It's a supplemental DHS bill.
Okay, so it's not gonna go through the normal process and then be effective six months from now?
I don't know the exact--
Assuming we don't have another government shutdown, which then delays our funding again, because people are gonna argue about this, right? Okay. Do you know offhand what time he was on the floor of the Senate making that speech yesterday?
If I had to best guess, sir, maybe 3:30, man.
Okay, so, I don't know. I don't watch C-Span very often, but I do pay attention to these things. 3:30 in the afternoon in the United States Senate, about 12 people are probably there, right? So honestly, I don't care if he's making a speech on the Senate to no one. There's more people here tonight than were watching that speech yesterday. Okay, okay. I promised myself I was gonna try and stay calm, but that's BS, okay? If he's not jumping up and down on the President's desk, and Pelosi's desk, and, you know, everyone else's desk, going on every talk show 24 hours a day, it's not gonna make a difference, okay? You also said that there's a bill to do an additional 600 Border Patrol agents in addition to more immigration judges. Is that correct?
The human--
So are we currently at 100% manning on all of our immigration judge slots?
I don't have that answer.
Okay. Are we currently 100% manned on our Border Patrol slots?
I don't believe so, sir.
So I bet if I went to the back, they would say that port of entry and Border Patrol are not 100% manned, like every other government agency. So what you're telling me is, oh, we have 600 additional authorizations, but we're already at 80% manned, 90% manned, whatever. So we already have openings, and now we just have more openings. So, right? Okay, so I guess my overall comment is, gentlemen, thanks for being here. Get your bosses here, and stop being delusional about how, no offense, these bills are really gonna help, because they're not the way that the system is, right? Have either of you ever been involved in federal government hiring practices? Going through OMB and all that stuff?
What?
To hire someone as a GS employee?
Exactly.
Very brief time for the United States Air Force.
Okay, so AFPC, they rock, right? Okay, so any federal government hiring process sucks. I used to do it as a full-time job. So I would have people that apply for the job, and six months after I select them, they still haven't gotten a job offer. So, again, let's go back to our 600 Border Patrol agents. Let's go back to our immigration judges, okay? Even if we apply those new numbers, how long is it gonna take to get 'em? That doesn't help us right now. And like the mayor so passionately said, like Commissioner Nettleton so passionately has said, in addition to the meeting last week, and like I told you yesterday, love the comment, okay? You need to help us now. You need to do something that's actually going to help us in the near frame, not six months, 12 months down the line, because we're gonna be swamped by then. And like Lee Weathersby said, if that happens, this is going to be considered, whether or not it is or not, a dangerous community, and no one's going to come here. And this community's gonna start to fold, okay? On that note, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman DeRusse. Counsel, any other comments or concerns? My thoughts exactly. I mean, what else do I need to say before I pass it on to the school district? I just want to convey the message, you know, you're speaking to an Air Force veteran here, and I completely understand how quickly we can send people over. I understand completely how quickly the government can react to an emergency humanitarian need. And yet, here, America begins in Del Rio, Texas. This is America. This is the United States of America. I am an American state citizen. I am not a Mexican citizen. I am not an Ecuadorian. I'm not a Congolean. I'm an American state citizen, having served my country. And I have two veterans, a grandparent, and a father who needed veterans' assistance their entire lifetimes, and they struggled in that system. And we're gonna be passing the baton to migrants who are not even paying into the taxing systems that are funding their resources, and we cannot get something in the United States of America. This is the United States of America. This is the most nonpartisan group of individuals that I have ever seen in a dais, in a room setting. Everybody is representing all kinds of different spectrums here right now, today. And our leaders that we're supposed to be looking up to, that are supposed to have all of the answers and solutions, can't even have a conversation with more than 12 people in front of them. They need to come down here, and they need to see what's going on in the border. I now pass this on to the School Board.
First of all, I'd like to say, don't kill the messenger. I appreciate y'all being in attendance today. But I've seen the work, for example, in our community, we have a lot of poverty. Seen the work that Commissioner Flores does with commodities for the poor, and we have children that come to our schools, you know, without coats in the winter, without shoes, you know, for, again, proper shoes for wearing to school, and people that are not able to pay their property taxes and so forth. There's poverty in our area. We have to take care of our people first, our citizens that are in our communities. And you have some things in motion, but the wheels of government move very slow. And I'm glad that you mentioned some of the bills, but we're in dire need of something like now, as some of you said yesterday. There's a lot of work that needs to happen, and it needs to happen real quick. Everyone is working at capacity with Border Patrol, Customs, ICE. Everyone is working as much as they can to alleviate the situation that we're in. And as I mentioned, this is a poverty area. I mean, we have so many people that take -- they take part in food pantry programs, and just to make ends meet. And so we're in this situation. It's a critical situation, and we don't have the resources that we would like to have. And we're in dire need of schools as it is. Every time we have a meeting, I mention to Dr. Vias, our superintendent, when are we gonna build a school on the north side? You know, there's houses going up. There's no more capacity at some of our schools in regard to facility needs. And again, funding is not available to have some of these schools built. But I just want to mention to you that I do appreciate the fact that you're here, and you're bringing in information, again, from our elected officials, but the wheels of government just move very slow. And we need something done like now. I'm gonna open it up to any other board members. I know Mr. Overfelt, you want to say something?
Not for y'all, so y'all are off the hook there. This was about the three entities working together. That was the whole reason this thing was called. So is there anything that the city or the county wants to ask of the school district as this goes along, or what are we gonna -- is there anything that y'all need?
I believe -- I know you're shaking your head no, but I believe the only thing that we're gonna look at is that one facility off a wagon wheel, as far as that goes, to my knowledge. Is it posted on Tuesday?
Just going back, we need to keep them -- I commend y'all. I mean, it's impressive. But we need to keep them, try to keep them in one location if we can't get them out.
This is just a -- and I hear you, but worst-case scenario, I mean, we have to--
Well, we Salvation Army, I believe, has delivered a tent, and there was some concern about how these individuals would be sleeping, but we have our military sleep in tents. And we're gonna provide a better structure for -- I'm not trying to be mean, not trying to be inhumane, but they do it all the time. I mean, and it's y'all's decision. I would just hope that we could keep them in one location. Hopefully, with the bus system that we've got, that we're -- the way it's working right now, hopefully, we can keep, you know, through the transition period, get them out sooner. And the ones that can't get out later, if we'll maybe hold back a couple of buses, and if they leave town at 9:30, 10 o'clock, man, so be it, versus trying to keep them. I would really -- and I mean, again, it's y'all's decision, but I would really hope that we could keep them in one location and wouldn't need your facility or anywhere else. I mean, it costs y'all more money, just in personnel, to have the Joe Ramos there. So to me, if we could keep them in one place.
And initially, part of the problem was the transportation infrastructure, you know, as all of the different companies, and, you know, everyone started working together, bringing more in. Hopefully, now, it'll, you know, once they get fully up and running, it will lessen that, because I think we're in agreement that one location is better, not only for, you know, safety, and now the logistics of getting them maybe at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning off to whatever they need, because if we got three people at this location, but six people at that location, well, now, just the timing is not gonna work. So I think we are in agreement. We're just trying to figure out those logistics along with the Coalition.
And I'm just looking at it, you know, I know the Border Patrol Chief Ortiz and I, when we conversated, had that conversation piece about the release and the timing and everything, and I think it's an evolving day, and please take these messages back up north. Is every day the numbers change, you know? And I'm looking at the capacity increasing, worst-case scenario, which is why we should at least have the plan of action in place. If the facilitation of transporting them out is efficient and quick, that's great.
How big of a vehicle do y'all have?
Take some.
15? We fit eight, seven, 15. You know?
Two is good.
Sure.
On behalf of the city, we'd like to thank the school district for working with the Boys and Girls Club. And since the overflow for the shelter is the Joe Ramos, it did, and it may displace the Boys and Girls Club, and we appreciate the agreement and willingness to work with the youth and the club to allow them to utilize some of the facilities for longstanding tradition in our community of summer recreation. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mayor, School Board members, are we done, if you are?
I'd just like to make a comment, please, about the shelter that the city's providing. And what happens, I mean, just as sometime maybe this weekend or later part of last week, one night we had, we can fit 50 at the Chihuahua Center. Well, that night, we had that full, and we still had needed a space for 60 more. I don't know what the tents would hold, but that night we needed for 60. So we had to go to the Joe Ramos Center. The problem is, then, that the expense that we are making, which we're trying to keep to the very minimal, but it does require a policeman and a fire, it doubles. As soon as that expense doubles, as soon as we have to open up the Joe Ramos Center. Yeah, we're looking for a place. The city doesn't have a place that big, you know? And we build it, build it, and they shall come. Yes, that's true, but--
This isn't Iowa, it's not in town.
Yeah, so the city doesn't have a real shelter, you know. We're just, you know, we're not trying not to even use the word shelter. It's a transitioning--
It's a transitioning center.
Because we don't have any showers, and we have some porta-potties. It's not the right situation. So, but the city just tried to make some decisions, and they were for the immediate need that y'all had. You know, that day they dropped off 40 people at Stripes? Boy, everybody was calling. They're hanging around at Stripes. What are y'all gonna do? Well, we did, you know, we made the best decision we could, but we made it as a united council, okay? And so, you know, we're maybe more tents. I don't know, you know.
How many tents did we send when we had the Syrian crisis? How many tents did we send when we had the refugees' crises in Syria? Quite a few of those, wasn't it? But we were able to get them over there and get them set up, and get food to them and everything else, weren't we? I think we rapidly deployed pretty quickly on that issue, which means we have that, the federal government has that capacity.
Yes, and it's not here.
I understand it's not here, but it wasn't in Syria either, so, I mean, but we got it there.
I was gonna give you an example. We were notified of a property in Carizo Springs not too long ago. That was handed over to GSA. GSA took about two weeks to do a surveillance of that so that they could house some of these folks. I think it's up to 1,400 out in the middle of nowhere. They have soccer fields. They have contracts for food and all those other things. So Health and Food Services, GSA is continuing to look for facilities like this around the country to solve this problem. That's all that anyone's been involved in. country to solve this problem. That's something that I think has been evolving.
And I should add, there have been funds that have been appropriated last February for the additional sample processes that are in the past, so they're also moving forward.
I'll get you an answer on the Syrian number.
Mayor?
I believe, and thank you, messengers. I have a high passion for my community. Thank you for hearing me out. I have nothing else to add. School district, school board?
Mayor, we've got one other item. If you'll let us get through that, we'll adjourn, and then we're done. You don't want.
Before you do that, I'd like to make a comment or ask you folks to take back a message. And this is from me personally. I'm not speaking for anybody else. Tell the representatives that we need them here in Del Rio now, not a few months from now when they start campaigning for reelection. The time to be here is now, and not for photo ops, but to actually see for themselves what we're having to deal with. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We'll certainly convey that. Please, as I mentioned earlier, please keep the lines of communication open. We work for you.
Thank you.
And I want y'all to know, as I told you the last time, this anger is not directed at y'all, too, by any form or fashion. I know you have a job, and I wouldn't want your job for all the money in the world. This anger is directed at the people y'all work for. And so please understand that my comments are not directed at y'all, too, at all. I mean, y'all are doing the best you can do.
Okay, for clarity.
Thank you.
Likewise.
Thank you all. Mayor? Mayor? Item number five, discussing impossible access on a formal request to the state and federal officials regarding the congested flow of traffic at the Del Rio port of entry, and a commitment to keep enough lanes open to minimize the crossing time to reduce the negative economic impact to the neighboring communities of the city of Del Rio and Ciudad de Cuna.
Judge, I'll make a motion that you work with the city to prepare a letter and send to our representatives on this issue.
I have a motion by Commissioner Nettleton.
Checking.
Second Commissioner Flores. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Next item is closed session. There was no closed session needed. Commissioners Court, it's 9:05. We are adjourned. And thank y'all so much for coming.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Counsel, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 9:05.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. School board?
Make a motion that we adjourn. Time is 9:05, seconded by Mr. Overfelt. All those in favor? Motion carries on. Thank you very much. Good night.